Second.
Second by Mrs. Costa. Dr. McGee, roll call, please.
Chairman Borje.
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke.
Yes.
Mrs. Kepiscus.
Yes.
Mrs. Costa.
Yes.
Mr. Leclerc.
Here.
Next, I'll make a motion to seal the closed session minutes of March 13, 2024. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Costa. Dr. McGee.
Chairman Borje.
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke.
Yes.
Mrs. Kepiscus.
Yes.
Mrs. Costa.
Yes.
Mr. Leclerc.
Yes.
As far as the closed session, on a five-to-nothing vote, the school committee approved the superintendent's contract. Would you please stand and join me in a moment of silence in the pledge? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The Kevin Coleman, Kay Coleman Elementary Campus Presentation will be, we'll have that at our next meeting. Next, I believe we have a video. Dr. McGee? It is? Okay. Why don't we do Good and Welfare then? So for anyone addressing the school committee during Good and Welfare this evening, please begin with your name and address. Your comments shall be no more than five minutes of speaking time and should be in good decorum. Please be aware that the committee cannot respond to you during Good and Welfare, but may direct you to an appropriate member of the administration team or may meet with you directly after the meeting for further discussion. So is there anyone here that would like to address the school committee?
Melissa Bubble, 650 Third Avenue, Wunsakke, Rhode Island. I am going to reread some of the comments and stuff about saving Coleman School and Burnin' and Globe. As a resident of Wunsakke, Rhode Island, and a parent who terraces the daily walks to and from school with my son, I'm deeply concerned about the potential loss of our neighborhood schools. These schools are more than just educational institutions. They are integral parts of community fabric that brings families together. The morning walk to school is not just about getting exercise without even thinking about it. It's also an opportunity for us to connect with other families in our neighborhood, fostering a sense of unity and, excuse me, camaraderie. This is invaluable. Neighborhood schools have been shown to promote higher levels of parental involvement due to their proximity. This involvement can lead to improved student achievement, reduced aptism in stronger communities, which are reconstructing, which we are reconstructing with Coleman School due to unfortunate past events. However, these cherished institutions are under threat. We must act now if we want to, if we want future generations in Wunsakke to enjoy the same benefits as we do today. I now have over 400 people who have signed this petition against merging all three of these schools. Some of these comments that are on this petition, and these say that there's a woman that is a retired teacher who taught at Globe Park for over 20 years. Neighborhood schools are vital to the community. We also already have a bus shortage. I've actually spoken with the bus company about my son's area where sometimes they're late. Most often times, they don't even have a bus monitor. So we would have to bus most of the students due to the change of schools. I am continuing this petition, and I've also, the more, the more parents I've talked to, the more had no idea that this was going on, as well as I ran into one parent who stated that there wasn't enough information about her being able to attend the school committee because she hasn't been able to find any information on it. So I think we need to educate the younger generation as to being able to attend these meetings and not just the school committee meetings. That includes the city council as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address the school committee? Seeing and hearing none, we'll go into recognitions and announcements. Dr. McGee?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Before we begin the recognitions and announcements, where we're going to recognize some amazing students at the Wunsakke Area Career and Technical Center, we have a short video that we'd like to show you, which will lead up to the awards being presented to the students. So if
Very well.
If the committee could step off the stage, we'll set up the video.
So we have a couple things. We put, it helps people express their opinions and everyone gets heard, so diverse opinions being said. We also said that it helps break things down more because in some classes, like it feels like some teachers just throw things at us at once. So I feel like if we use this, like we can break down our own, like, opinions on it. And like, I just feel like it makes things more organized.
I've heard that group kind of say the same thing as opposed to the organization and working it out. Do you have one?
Um, we just have one. It helps us to open to new people and their views on things. So it helps, because a lot of us didn't have this in elementary school, so a decent amount of us are kind of antisocial and stick to a little group of friends. So this helps us break out and talk to new people and learn more about them.
So that short snippet was a video of our amazing Wunsakke Area Career and Technical students in the Child Studies Program, and they were participating in an academic teaming exercise. You noticed that the students were communicating with one another, they were sharing ideas, they were, in some cases, respectfully disagreeing with one another. What it is an example of is academic discourse, and academic teaming is something that the Wunsakke Education Department, we've been implementing for a couple of years now. We're very fortunate to have seven innovation specialists who have been working across the district. They're working currently at the high school, and they're training teachers around working with students to increase academic discourse. And one of the things that, one of the ideas that we came up with this year was what better than to provide an opportunity that we're actually providing educators here in our district? Let's provide it to our students who, whose future might bring them maybe back to the Wunsakke Education Department as a teacher. And if not, back to the Wunsakke Education Department, you know, maybe to another school district in the future. So we were so, so impressed with the ability and how our students picked up the academic teaming skills and how impressive that they were, that we reached out to the organization and said, "We really want to recognize our students." And they said, "Fantastic." This is the first time ever that our students, that any students in the country that are a part of academic teaming have been trained. So I want to start by just giving our amazing students an amazing round of applause for that. We in the Wunsakke Education Department have been on a mission to transform core education, and it starts in Wunsakke. As part of this transformation work, I'd like to celebrate the 44 students in our Child Studies Program at the Career Center who participated in the exact same academic teaming training that we provide our teachers. Not only were these students actively engaged participants, but their answers were thoughtful, insightful, and of a quality equal to that of veteran teachers. While we hope each one of these students returns to us in the future, as educators, we'll be very proud if they bring these skills that they've learned here to our program, to colleges and other districts to help transform education for all students. In honor of this achievement, Instructional Empowerment, which is the organization that we've been working with, that's been training our teachers, is pleased, is pleased to award certificates to the first cohort of students to ever complete such a training. So I'm going to step, if the committee would follow me, step to the other side of the dais.
Sure.
We're going to hand out the certificates to our students. So when I call the name of the student, if you would kindly come up to the stage, the school committee wished to recognize you, and I have your certificate here. So the first student is Bianca Vega. Nope. Yanalee Cologne Ortiz. When we finish, I would love to take a photo of all of our students, their teachers and instructors here on the stage with the committee. I have, yep, I have that here. Yes. Yep, yes. Sure, we can have, yeah. Okay. Yes. Yes. Yes, 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 come on up. Yes. The next student is Mama Stu Nagak. She's not here. Okay. Lily Feng Sasei. Liliana Watts. Chrislyn Bergeron. Caitlin Picard. Julissa Torres. Addison Carrigan. Hannah Rayo. Felicity Gaffney. Emily Ledesma. Emily Dano. Ebietta Akpoko. Destiny Varela. Delaney Remillard. Autumn Trudeau. Ariana Laferrier. Andy Cooper. Addison Kammer. Sonali Diaz. Skylia Miller. Nivea Mark. Sabrina Conti. Millsbeth Candelaers Sintron. Nina Antunes. Melissa Nakawambe. Mackenzie Miller. So let's give everyone a warm round of applause to these amazing students. And let's, let's all give a great round of applause to their amazing teacher, Mrs. McKenna. Yes. And let's give an amazing round of applause to the parents and families that are here this evening. If the students could come back up to the stage, we would love to take a photo of everyone.
Yeah, we'll fit, yeah, they'll fit, yeah. Absolutely.
I think the school committee should stand on the table.
I think it's so sad. She keeps on telling me.
This is so great.
Thank you.
No, that's always just like, I'm like, I just love my new song.
I see it before my look.
This is awesome.
Look what you do this.
At least they feel like they serve a useful purpose.
Huh?
At least they feel like they serve a useful purpose.
You guys are supposed to do this too.
No, no, just let them do it.
They're good, they're good.
I'm going to say yes?
For the kids.
Cheese. Ready, guys?
Stand on the chair.
No, no, go ahead.
One, two, three, say cheese. Smile. Ready, guys? One, two, three. Cheese. Awesome. You guys can come up forward if you need to.
Congratulations. Nice job, nice job.
Motion to adjourn?
Yes, right eye.
Looked like an eye.
Throwing that out there.
I third.
Are we also a recognition?
We are good with recognitions, yes.
All right.
We had water.
We'll continue at the meeting and I'll make a motion to receive and place on file the recognitions and announcements. We have a second.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Costa. Second by Mrs. Costa. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Next, we'll go to the approval of minutes. I'll make a motion to approve the February 28, 2024 closed meeting minutes. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Costa. Dr. McGee, roll call.
Chairman Borje.
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke.
Yes.
Mrs. Kepiscus.
Yes.
Mrs. Costa.
Yes.
Mr. Leclair.
Yes.
Next, I'll make a motion to approve the February 28, 2024 open meeting minutes. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Costa. Dr. McGee.
Chairman Borje.
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke.
Yes.
Mrs. Kepiscus.
Yes.
Mrs. Costa.
Yes.
Mr. Leclair.
Yes.
Next, I'll make a motion to discuss and approve the consent agenda. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Costa. Does any member of the committee want to take any item out of? We're all good?
Negative.
Dr. McGee.
Chairman Borje.
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke.
Yes.
Mrs. Kepiscus.
Yes.
Mrs. Costa.
Yes.
Mr. Leclair.
Yes.
Next, I'll ask our student representative, Matthew Qsun, to give us his report. Matthew.
Thank you, Chairman.
Hold on. Why don't you wait?
Can you just address them to keep it down while they're leaving?
Excuse me, folks. Folks, we're trying to run the meeting. If you could. Thank you.
Well, you agree.
Go ahead, Matthew.
Alrighty. So I'm excited to announce that Mr. Villanovan is making a comeback to WHS after about four years. It will be held Friday, April 12th at 7:00 PM in the auditorium at the high school. It will feature 10 boys and 10 girls seniors competing in various fun-filled acts, including dances, skits, Q and A panels, and more, along with cameos from other seniors, teachers, and students. At the end of the night, we will see who will be crowned Mister and Miss Villanovan. Tickets will be $10 in advance at the high school and $15 at the door. It will certainly be a fun-filled night, so I suggest all of you come and see it. Next up, we have a new National Honor Society and Rhode Island Honor Society advisor in the high school. Unfortunately, a few weeks ago, Mrs. Weiner, one of our deans, as well as the National Honor Society and Rhode Island Honor Society advisor, had to step down, and she will be greatly missed by many of us at the high school. But luckily, we had quick, quick turnaround time, and now we have Ms. Nancy Cozera back as our NHS advisor from a few years ago, and Mr. Joshua Maslin, our, as our Rhode Island Honor Society advisor. Both honor societies look forward to resuming their normal schedule and staying on track for induction at the end of the school year. Lastly, last Thursday, members of our FBLA chapter, Future Business Leaders of America, went to their state leadership conference at Johnson and Wales, and each competed in their individual competitions. And they look forward to seeing what places they got with the goal of placing high enough to attend the National Leadership Conference, which will be held in Orlando, Florida this year. That concludes my report. I'll answer any questions.
Any questions or comments?
Mr. Chairman.
Vice Chair Burke.
Uh, I just wanted to know, Matthew, are you gonna be one of the candidates for Mr. Villanovan?
I won't be. No, not this time. But there will be plenty of good ones, that's for sure.
Thank you. Anyone else? Thank you for your report, Matthew. Good job. I'll make a motion to receive and place on file the student representative report. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Vice Chair Burke. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Dr. McGee, would you give us your superintendent's report?
Yes, I will, Mr. Chairman. Thank you. So I'm gonna start with personnel matters update. Uh, the committee has a list of, um, some positions here, some, uh, teacher assistant positions that we have hired across the district, uh, one at Globe Park, one at Hope Year Elementary. We also have some hourly stipend positions as we get ready for, um, summer school in our summer programming, literacy programming, and as, um, as Matthew just, just noted, uh, we also have, um, uh, Mr. Maslin and Mrs. Cozera here as, as they'll be starting, uh, those, those stipend positions, so we're excited about that. Um, the second agenda item I have is a city of Windsocket schools. Just wanted to, to sort of, um, continue on from my, uh, last, uh, school committee meetings, uh, report when I, I spoke about the, uh, the cap. And there, the fact that there, there will be no cap, um, at, uh, at Rise Prep. And I just, I just wanted to, to clarify that my, my comments, um, wh- while they were very, very strong, and, um, you know, I, I, I certainly advocate strongly for the Windsocket Education Department. Um, when I, when I, when I spoke out, um, I was speaking out primarily to the, the Council on Elementary and Secondary Education. Um, I, I was not speaking out against, um, you know, certainly the mayor. I was not speaking out against any, any of our charter schools or mayoral academies here, here in the city. But I, but I was very upset, and I'm still very upset, at the way the, uh, the council handled, uh, this situation and didn't even, uh, except one member of the council. Um, the, the rest of the, of the members of the council did, did, clearly didn't take into consideration fiscal impact that, uh, that have, not having a cap will, will be on the Windsocket Education Department. So I just wanted to let, um, everyone know, um, that, and, and that, you know, I'm, I'm looking forward. We've, we've had some meetings with, uh, Mayor Beauchamp, some very positive meetings where we've talked about, there's some potential ways that we could collaborate, um, with, with some of the, uh, the charters and, and mayoral academies here, um, in the city, you know, being Beacon and Founders and, and Rise Prep. And, and one of the areas that I, I'd like to, uh, reach out, uh, to them is, is to look at, uh, attendance. Um, as, as the committee is aware, attendance is an issue, not only here in Windsocket, but across the state, across the nation, in fact. And it's also an issue, uh, with charters and mayoral academies. So I think, um, I'll be reaching out to them, um, to the leaders of, of, of those, uh, schools to see if, if we can come together and maybe share best practice around attendance. There are a lot of wonderful things that we do here in Windsocket, and I'm sure there are some wonderful things that they do, um, with their students and their families. And I think it would be a good idea for us to talk about what's working for us, what's working for them. Um, and again, share those best practices. So I'll be doing that soon. Uh, the third agenda item is a Cass Park athletic field update. And again, we've had some meetings with, uh, Mayor Beauchamp, and we have looked at the, um, the progress at Cass Park. We've, we've looked at the, the drawings of, of the fields and, you know, specifically the football field, also the clubhouse. Um, it's encouraging that Mayor Beauchamp has reached out to us and, and has met with us and, and is seeking our, our input and our feedback. We're really excited moving forward. I, I think that this, this project is gonna be a very successful project. And, you know, as I said, we, we've met on a few occasions. We're gonna continue to meet, um, when it comes to, you know, making sure that the Windsocket Education Department, the Athletic Department, has what it needs at Cass Park when it comes to a clubhouse, as well as the football field and some, uh, track and field, um, areas, as well as, uh, some practice facilities, um, in the park. We, uh, myself and, and our chief operating officer, uh, Mr. Notarianni, and our athletic director, uh, Nancy Giordano have, have gone to some schools. We, we went to North Providence High School. We went to Lincoln High School, uh, prior to vacation, and we met with their athletic directors to look at, at their athletic complexes, to get a sense of what they have, you know, how they, um, utilize their fields, how they utilize their, their clubhouse. And we, we got a lot of really good information that we brought back. So as we continue this process, you know, we'll be sitting down with, with the mayor and, um, uh, Mr. D'Agostino and their team of architects as we look at, uh, the clubhouse and what the needs are for the, for the district, and also what the needs are for the community at large. So I, I feel really good about the meetings we've had, and I'm looking forward, uh, as we move forward to the, the ultimate completion of, of Cass Park. And, and it's gonna be exciting, uh, that we're going to have, uh, an area pretty much on campus for our, our student athletes to utilize, um, you know, each day and during, during their respective seasons. So, uh, with that, Mr. Chairman, uh, love to answer any questions any, any members of the committee may have at this time.
I guess the one comment I wanna make is I agree with you. We've had good conversations with the mayor, uh, Mr. D'Agostino, uh, to talk about Cass Park and the, actually the designs of, of the field, uh, as well as he's, you know, he wanted our thoughts in terms of what we would need in the clubhouse. And I find that very refreshing that both Mr. D'Agostino and the mayor said, "We wanna make sure that if we build this complex, that we do the best job possible, uh, in terms of getting what the school department needs." So, uh, you know, he invited us to, uh, invited you and Mr. Notarianni and others to meet with the architects, so they would incorporate what we would need, or what we would like to have in the clubhouse, incorporate it into their design and their final plan. I thought that was very encouraging. The project will continue to move along, and, you know, we'll make ourselves available, uh, to the mayor and his people to make sure that, uh, we get the best complex that we possibly can get. Anyone else? Mr. Mr. Leclair, you were there.
I was there. I agree with everything. It was a fun, it was a fantastic conversation. I'm glad we're included at this point.
Yep. It's very nice to be included and not just, uh, uh, told that, you know, you're gonna get what we, what we give you. Uh, it's a whole, it seems like it's a whole different approach. It's very encouraging. It's made us feel good, and we'll continue that conversation.
Agreed.
There's no one else. I'll make a motion to receive the superintendent's report and place it on file. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Leclair and Mrs. Costa. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Next, I will, we will go into the school subcommittee reports. I'll ask Mrs. Kepiscus to give us the CLAC update.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. It's gonna be a short report, 'cause it was a very short meeting. Called to order at 6:04. We had no presentations under old business. We discussed the same old things. Uh, plea for new leadership with the CLAC, because I'm looking for my replacement still. Um, and we touched base on the RIDE survey works being underway. Under new business, there was nothing. Superintendent, um, spoke to the attendees and briefly discussed the anticipated loss of funding with the loss of ESSR funds and how this will be addressed in terms of budgeting for the next fiscal year. At this point, layoffs are anticipated. Special Ed Director reminded all that the RIDE school support visit is ongoing here in Windsocket. Within-school visits and observations to occur the week of March 18th. Schools are also preparing for administration of the DLM, which is essentially the statewide assessment for our alternate assessment students. Uh, professional development continues to be offered by RIDE on how to qualify students for alternate assessment, and more importantly, on how not to overqualify students for alternate assessment. Um, and all staff listed in IUP teams will be required to be trained. A school committee liaison, that's me, reported that the next school committee meetings would be tonight and two weeks from today, on the 27th. The next CLAC meeting is scheduled for April 4th at 6:00 PM virtual. Only, that may change. I'll be talking to Ms. Morell and sending an email out to the membership. The meeting adjourned at 6:15 PM, 11 minutes later.
Thank you, Mrs. Kepiscus. I think you set a record.
We did.
And I don't think anybody wants to take your place with such a record.
Yep, nice try.
That's 'cause I keep nominating her.
I'll make a motion to receive and place on file the CLAC update. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Costa. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Next, I'll ask Mrs. Kepiscus to give us the, uh, curriculum update.
This is almost longer. The curriculum subcommitting met on March, subcommittee met on March 4th. Called to order at 3:30. We had a presentation on the digital media film curriculum. Mr. Marzini presented to us as to the films shown as part of the digital media curriculum. Some films are rated R and some were simply unrated in contradiction of our policy, which is approved sixteen, over 16 years ago, that only movies rated G or PG would be shown in a classroom. There are reasons relating to the curriculum why these films are chosen and to be included, and not, those are not limited, including but not limited to style and message. To make sure our students are best prepared for the real world, what will they be, they will be expected to thrive. Each student and or parent or guardian is required to sign a consent form to participate in this curriculum, and the form allows the student or family to opt out of the certain particular films, Mr. Marzini assured the subcommittee. It also provides trigger warnings where appropriate to allow students to look away or exit the room without penalty. If a student opts out of a particular film, an alternate assessment, excuse me, off, alternate assignment is offered. A copy of the consent form was provided to the subcommittee and had to suggest it to Mr. Borje. A list of films will be provided along with this consent form, so families can know to what they are consenting. This should address any concerns that the public may raise. We then had a presentation on PBIS, Positive Behavioral Intervention and Supports, and the work going on across the district, presented by Hannah Goodwin Brown, a former special educator and current consultant to the district from the New England Base Camp Program. This, uh, program is based on the CASL standards, which are designed to teach explicit lessons regarding social emotional skills. It supports academic integration and teaming. It also includes a focus on school and classroom climate through the use of assertive practices, all to create a positive, predictable, equitable, and safe learning environment where everyone can thrive. School-wide shared values are adopted and specifically taught to the children to teach expectations. Children are rewarded for positive behaviors with cards, which can be exchanged for certain rewards, so to speak. This initiative has, as of this school year, been expanded to include all schools in the district, after having started small in a few schools in the spring of 2020. Mr. Borje suggested that WD needs to make more of an effort to share information and publish the successes of this initiative, because the only information which seems to reach the community is negative, fights, et cetera. I warned that if you're going to bring up this program, be prepared to discuss consequences for non-conforming behavior, which the subcommittee was assured are part of this system as well. We then moved on to transforming core instruction. The purpose of this initiative is to flatten school and educational inequity and inequality, often rooted in racial inequality and poverty-related issues. The purpose is to teach our students to be independent educational thinkers that they need to be for the 21st century world. School systems are not neutral, but have biases based on race and poverty, which lead to unequal results. Schools need to create system, systems which are equalizers. Part of transforming core instruction will require creating a certification model for staff who'll bring these curriculum changes to the classroom to create those independent thinkers instead of dependent students. The goal is to create successfully contributing members of the global community, a mission statement which is not static but responsive. Part of this curriculum change involves all students having a role in the classroom through peer coaching, elemental to teaching the lost art of conversation and discourse. This helps to foster an environment where students talk to each other, as opposed to simply being talked at by their educations, educators. Some exciting news results were shared with the subcommittee, but I will leave the sharing of this news to the appropriate parties at a later date. The next curriculum subcommittee meeting is scheduled for April 23rd, 2024 at 3:30 at Hamlet Middle School, Room 124. The meeting adjourned at 5:04, and that concludes my report, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mrs. Kepiscus. Any questions or comments? Then I'll make a motion to receive and place on file the curriculum update. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Costa. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Next, we'll go into conferences and discussions. Our first item, the technology and facilities update, will be given next, at the next month, next month's meeting. Next, we'll go into the social, emotional, learning, and mental health, health update. I'll ask Mr. Cuadros to give us his report.
Okay. Uh, so I'm gonna report on four categories that we've been tracking in the district throughout the course of the school year. Uh, the first one is suspected abuse, which resulted in filing a report with DCYF. We currently have a total of 128, uh, documented incidents in which we contacted DCYF, with a breakdown of 65 at the secondary level and 63 at the elementary level. It's noteworthy that the month in which we had the most incidents was October with 27. Uh, we also track any risk assessments or safety assessments that we have on our students. We currently have a total of 164. Uh, there's a little bit of a discrepancy between elementary and secondary. At the secondary level, we have completed 114 risk assessments. At the elementary level, we have completed 50. Again, October, uh, standing out with 39 total risk assessments. Total number of restraints in the district so far, we have 41. 30 of them coming at the elementary level, 11 at the secondary level. And yet again, October stands out as the highest number of restraints in the district with a total of eight. And then currently, what was documented to me is we have nine total bullying cases, um, all coming at the elementary level, with February being the standout. all coming at the elementary level with February being the standout with seven total incidents of bullying. And that completes my report unless there's any questions.
Mr. Cuadros, I, I'm going to ask, because it's your report. Suspected abuse, we have 128 in total.
Yes.
What is done with those when you have a suspected abuse? What happens after that?
So once we contact DCYF, it is at their discretion if they choose to open a case. What we are currently working on now is with partnerships with Sojourner House and Thundermist. Any student that we believe we should have a follow-up with, they get placed into a group. And so we are starting both clinical and non-clinical groups with Sojourner House in April as a direct result of the number of documented reports that we've been receiving.
Thank you. I'm going to continue along. The safety assessment, what is, what is that? What are those incidents about? What is that?
We're looking for students to be able to contract for safety based on either suicidal or homicidal statements that often get made and reported either from that student directly or another student brings it to the attention of a teacher, which then brings it to the attention of one of our clinicians. And so they run a risk assessment to ensure that that student is able to contract for their safety and for the safety of others. In a situation in which the clinician believes they are not, that's when we would call rescue and call the family and bring them to one of the hospitals to make sure that we can contract for their safety.
Okay. Restraint. Take it away. How do we, what does that mean and what is done with restraints?
It's a great question. So a restraint is legally classified as any restriction of mobility of a student. And so a restraint could be simply going hands-on to prevent a fight. A restraint can be if a student is really dysregulated and causing self-harm where we may have to go hands-on. It's important to note that for us to be in legal compliance, anyone that goes hands-on with a student must be restraint certified and renewed on a yearly basis. And so when a student is dysregulated in one form or another, where the last resort to ensure their safety or the safety of anyone else is to properly go into a restraint. Oftentimes, restraints require more than two people. You'll have two people ideally doing the hold and someone documenting, making sure the student's able to breathe and tracking the amount of time. And so based on the number of restraints, in an ideal world, our follow-up would be to then assess the number of behavioral incident reports that were coming up and see what we can do to prevent this in the future.
Since restraints can occur throughout the district, are all district personnel certified? Because this could happen in any, in any classroom, anywhere on campus, on their campuses. So what percentage of the folks are certified to do this?
Percentage is a great question that I don't have an answer for.
Okay.
I could tell you it's not 100%. And that is something that we, we do need to address, I think, particularly with the amount of students that we're seeing dysregulated across all levels at the elementary and secondary level. So I don't know how many we currently have certified, but my recommendation would be that we certify many more. That would be a great question for the Director of Special Ed.
Let me, one more thing is, do we have certified folks at all our buildings at this point?
Yes, we do.
We do?
Yes.
Okay.
So just to jump in, currently, we provide CPI, which is Crisis Prevention Intervention. Roger Pickard and Sean Hunter are our trainers currently. And every school year, we provide the yearly refresher training at every building. We encourage as many staff in the building to renew. It's a three and a half hour training that they really stress how to de-escalate students and they show how to do the restraints properly, but we try not to do them because that is the last resort. However, we only do that if the child is endangering, hurting themselves or somebody else. So we really try not to do that at all. However, there is a heavy focus on de-escalation and redirecting. We also provide the full training for new employees that come aboard. It's a 10-hour training that we provide and then yearly, it's the three and a half hour. So we do that on a yearly basis. In the beginning, like I said, we try to do it at every building together so that way there if you're training together, you're de-escalating together and the crisis teams are working together. But this is something that we've been trying to perfect over the last few years. We highly, highly encourage staff to take the training and participate.
Oh, that's excellent. That's good to hear. And I noted bullying incidents are way down and I guess all the programs, protocols that we've got in our schools are basically working because you might have expected in the past that these numbers would be a lot higher than what they are now. So it's, it's nice to see that. I like your report. I take it it's a good report. Look forward to them, you know, as we go along because I think this is very informative. Thank you. Anyone else?
Mr. Chairman.
By Shiber.
Just a, a quick, a quick question, Kyle. There were no middle school incidents in your report. Is that different planning or what's, what's going on there?
So I include middle school and high school as secondary level.
Oh, okay.
So in fact, when I disaggregate the data, we actually have many more of the risk assessments and suspected abuse incidents coming out of our middle schools.
So the statistics on the secondary include middle school?
Middle school and high school, yes.
Okay. Can you break those out, middle school and high school, as we go along? I think it'd be, it'd be informative. I agree with that. Yeah, I think we, we don't want to see that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Mr. Leclair?
Don, you, you said highly encouraged, so it's not mandated then? So there's no incentive or any reason for them to take it except for?
So we provide PD hours and for them to take it. We can't pay them to take the training. We try to provide it as often as we can during timeframes that we can. We've done it on weekends. We do it after school. We've done it on vacations, during breaks, during our PD academy. It's not written, written in anybody's job description, but if they're working in a severe intellectual disabilities classroom or a behavioral classroom, we highly encourage for the safety of themselves and for others to take the course because we're teaching them how to de-escalate students. We also on the, on our new hire orientation, we also have Mr. Pickard come in and just kind of do an overview for all the paraprofessionals and new teachers on de-escalation techniques. So they don't get fully certified for that, but they get some tips and tricks on how to support the students. But it's a heavy, heavy emphasis on de-escalation and how to change the student's mindset and how to catch the triggers before something happens.
I know you don't probably have numbers, but is it attended, is it well-attended, the classes or?
In the past, it had been. We, we do have over 100 staff that are trained. However, recently, we have had some numbers go down. Staff members are sometimes nervous about putting hands-on because of repercussions that could happen and because, you know, everyone has their cell phone out, you know, especially at the middle school, high school, videotaping everything, that kind of, you know.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Mrs. Kepiscus?
I, I know you're probably not, I don't know which one of you really addressed this to you, Mr. Cuadros or Ms. Morell. With regard to restraints, I sit on the Rhode Island Special Education Advisory Committee and we probably seven years ago worked really hard on developing policies on the state level around restraint, banning prone restraints, setting up all the requirement, reporting requirements for restraint. My real question is with regard to special education, would it be possible in the future for you to break out how many of those restraints are special education related? Because it's been our experience, at least on the state level, that the number is higher among the special ed population because of dysregulation.
Yeah, so again, great point. I, I think that speaks to we can tighten up some of our data systems. Could we do that? Yes. Currently, in the data process, for us to go on the back end to triangulate which one of the students in a restraint is on an IUP would be multiple steps. And so we want to streamline that to be much more efficient so we can have a snapshot holistically looking. That's some of the work that Al and I have talked about spending over the summer, like what does it look like to really streamline and make for more comprehensive data systems. Currently, I, I don't think we're there.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Then I'll make a motion to receive and place on file a social, emotional, learning, mental health update. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second, Mrs. Costa, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Next, I'll ask Dr. Holt to give us the curriculum and development update.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First, I would like to say that we're presenting two different things that are happening across the district. The first is the pathway to graduation for the class of 2028. As the committee is aware, there are new graduation requirements for the incoming freshman class next year and it changes the requirements for them, the classes they need to take in order to graduate. So on March 28th, 2024, we will be hosting an informational session for families of the class of 2028. That's our current eighth graders regarding these new regulations. This session will be held at the high school in the auditorium starting at 6:00 PM. And again, we're just going to discuss the new requirements, provide families with an example of a student's trajectory through high school and information about the high school course selection and electives. That should say electives. I apologize. It says elections. It should be electives. The next thing, event that I want to highlight is parent-teacher conferences are coming up. It's March, so we've kind of reached the time in the year where we meet with our parents. Our parent-teacher conferences for elementary schools will be held on March 21st. Our middle schools parent-teacher conferences will be held on the 14th, which is tomorrow. And our high school conferences will be held on March 28th. I'd also like to share a few things about our curriculum updates. You've heard a lot in the last few months about our model of instruction. I'm going to talk about it again for academic teaming. During our February vacation week, we hosted a professional development on the model of instruction for Level 2.0 or 201. Our students completed 101. Our teachers, we had a session for 201. We had approximately 20 staff members who attended from all levels, particularly our high school math department were in force during this session. Staff learned strategies to make intentional connections that help students link their prior knowledge to new skills and concepts that are being taught in the classroom. Next, we'd like to discuss our high-quality instructional materials. You've heard me talk often about the need for our curriculum to be greenlit and that is from Ed Reports, from the review by Ed Reports. We're continuing to look at curricula and we're just now beginning the process, process of examining our curriculum options for social studies and science. At this time, there are only three curriculum that are approved for science by Ed Reports. There's a middle school or two middle schools, one high school biology, so not all courses that we would need for the high school, just one biology, and one elementary. And not even one K through 12. So if we were to adopt anything, it would be segmented. It would be a different curriculum from elementary to middle to high school if we were to adopt right now. RIDE will not require that we adopt a greenlit designated curriculum for social studies and we are in the process of convening a team across secondary, so that would be middle and high school, to look at some of the current options for curriculum in social studies. This is a big change, our social studies curriculum, the new standards that came out, the Rhode Island social studies standards have a significant change in our elementary. So we're waiting a bit for elementary curriculum from vendors to catch up. In particular, fourth grade is all about Rhode Island history, which we won't find in a national vendor. And fifth grade is ancient civilization, so Egypt and whatnot, what typically had been in middle school. Last, I just want to inform the committee of some assessments that are coming up. It's the end of the school year, so we've got a lot of state assessments that are rolling our way. We have RICAS for ELA that is administered for grades three through eight. The window will start March 25th. We have RICAS Math again for grades three through eight and that window will open May 6th. We have our Dynamic Learning Map, which is our students who do not take RICAS for either ELA or Math and that window will open April 1st. It's also for science as well. Our regular science test, the NGSA, that will be for grades five, eight, and 11. That will be, the window will open on May 13th. And then we have our final one, which is SATs and PSATs and that window opens on April 1st. So we'll be doing a lot of testing in our buildings in the next, next few months. I highly encourage families to ensure that their students are in attendance at school so that they can be prepared for the test and be at school for the test. That concludes my report, Chairman, and I'm happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Dr. Holt. Any questions, comments for? By Shiber?
Just a quick question, because you talked about the social studies curriculum.
Yes.
Does the state require a civics?
Yes. Yep. It's part of the new graduation requirements.
That's one of the new, and that'll come out of social studies?
That's correct. It'll be in social studies. There are five standards through social studies that are required for the graduation requirements. They don't necessarily align up exactly to courses, so civics is one of them. US History 1 and 2, World History 1 and 2, and there's one other that I'm drawing a blank on. I, I can't recall at this time, but there's a list of curriculum that we have to cover, or standards that we have to cover in social studies for the high school.
Right now or is that down the road?
This starts with the, the current eighth grade class.
Will be the civics requirement.
That's correct, yes. And where we have been partnering, WED has been partnering with Generation Citizens probably maybe 10 years. It's been, it's been a long time, Dr. McGee. Before I came back to the district in this position, we had a partnership with Generation Citizens and they work with our eighth grade and ninth grade social studies teachers and create action civics projects for our students. They actually will be having a local action civics day. I think it's in May. I don't have the date on me, but I can report it next time. We'll have a local day here. They'll be hosted at Hamlet and then we go to the State House after for the civics day at the State House.
Excellent. Anything else?
Thank you.
Mr. Leclair, you had a comment?
No, I'm good. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else? I'll make a motion to receive and place on file the curriculum and development update. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second, Mrs. Costa, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The Title I and Literacy Update Report will be given at our next meeting. Next, I'll ask Mrs. Gia to give us the multi-language learners update.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and Board. The first topic is our enrollments. Our registration department has been staying busy. Our multilingual learners now represent 18% of our One Socket Education Department population. Since last March of 2023, the population of multilingual learners has increased by 14.5%. So it's a very large increase. Typically, over the school year, we've been seeing a 12% increase, so we've already surpassed that. 55% of our multilingual learners come from a Spanish-speaking country. 10% of multilingual learners come from a Portuguese, Spanish-speaking country. Those are our top two languages right now, but we do have other languages that are represented. Wolof, Haitian Creole, Malalaam, Arabic, Vietnamese, Chinese, Tamil, and Gujarati, and a few more. Wolof is primarily spoken in Senegal and Gambia. Haitian Creole is from Haiti. Malalaam, Tamil, and Gujarati are Indian languages. Arabic is the Middle East, Vietnamese is Vietnam, and Chinese is mostly China. In order to support all these multilingual learners that are coming in, what we have been doing is providing certification, supporting our teachers to get certified in teaching English to, English to speakers of other languages. We currently have 100 staff members that are currently certified or going to get certification. We currently have 26 educators in the programs through various universities in Rhode Island. We have four teachers that are attending RICS Urban Multicultural Special Education Pathway. This allows them to get certification in TESOL or teaching English to speakers of other languages and if they would like a master's in special education. So we partner with the Special Ed Department to support all the teachers who are already certified in special ed to get this certification. We also have a total of 18 teachers who either attend the RICS TESOL program or URI's TESOL program. And we now have four administrators who are now in the endorsement program at URI for the multilingual learner education for administrators. So we are very busy getting more teachers certified.
So we are very busy getting more teachers certified every year, and we're looking to continue that over the next few years.
Thank you very much. Any questions for Mrs. Aguirre? Then I'll make a motion to receive and place on file the Multi-Language Learners' Update. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Costa. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Next, I'll ask Ms. Kitchen to give us the Human Resource and Labor Relations Update.
Hi, good evening. The HR Department, we're still actively recruiting for any special educators. We still have some vacancies, so we're always actively recruiting for those and working in partnership with the special ed department, as well as trying to continually try to hire paraprofessionals. We're still short in some of those areas. We're working, using SchoolSpring in Indeed, so we are finding new applicants. We're just slowing down a little bit. We're hoping it speeds up on the paraprofessionals. There are a number of classes that'll be ending over the next couple of weeks. Since the last school committee meeting, we've hired seven new substitutes, teacher substitutes, under the $200 a day. So that is a, we're getting there. We're continuing to hire substitutes as we can. On March 26th, the Rhode Island Department of Ed is holding a virtual job fair for education. I will be attending that. This is the first time they do in this platform, so we'll see how it works. And they're doing an in-person job fair on April 3rd that I will be attending. That's it.
Thank you for your report. Any questions for her? I'll make a motion to receive and place on file the Human Resource and Labor Relations Update. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Vice Chair Burke. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We have no unfinished business, but we do have one new business item, which is a resolution hopefully the committee will support and approve. It's, and a lot of the districts that I'm finding are actually putting together the same resolution regarding the funding formula. You have that resolution in your package. Are there any questions with regards to this? We're trying to, what we're trying, what we're trying to do is that the governor is, has lowered the Consumer Price Index, the formula for the core instructional account amount is based on the CPI index to a great extent, and that has been reduced. And as a result, the entire state is losing some $26 million in core funding. And this resolution among all the districts is asking, is really communicating to the governor, the Speaker of the House, the President of the Senate, all our representatives, our local representatives and senators, the city council and the mayor, to really speak against this budget that he's proposing, and hopefully that this will be turned around. To One Socket, out of that 26 million, I believe it's about 1.9 million, Mr. Perrier, about that, that we would lose right off the bat. So that's something we certainly can't afford with our tight budget, and we would, I would like to get this resolution approved and signed because we would all sign it tonight. The second thing is, as part of this resolution, is that the General Assembly increased the High-Cost Special Education Categorical Fund to 15 million. However, if the way the calculation is, can be corrected, we would get an extra 25 million by lowering, actually, the categorical provided 15 million by lowering the reimbursement threshold from three times the CIA, which is the core instructional amount, plus student success factor to four times. By doing that, if we reduce, if this was reduced to three times, however that calculation worked, there'd be an extra, it would be 25 million that would be provided for special education, and I think that'd be something that we want to fight for. So that's what the resolution is before us. Like I said, this resolution, signed resolution, will be sent to all the folks that I mentioned. If there are any questions, we'll go from here. So do we have?
I'll make a motion to agree with your resolution.
Second.
Second. Any other, any other others? Dr. McGee?
Chairman Borger.
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke.
Yes.
Mrs. Kepiscus.
Yes.
Mrs. Costa.
Absolutely.
Mr. Leclerc.
Yes.
Yes, that's a yes? Yes. Having no other business, I'll make a motion to adjourn the meeting at 8:15. Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned. Thank you, everyone. Thank you for all your reports. Great job.